All right, well, welcome, folks, to our October 10 Xenia City Council meeting. And before we call the meeting to order, I'm going to have Pastor Todd Martin come and do an invocation for us. If you please rise.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight, Lord, and we just want to pray for folks that have been affected by our, by the weather down south and the hurricanes. Lord, I know they're hurting. And so, Lord, we lift them up tonight. And, Lord, we lift up this council meeting and all the business that's before us. Lord, that you would help us, give us wisdom, Lord, and discernment on what to do. And, Lord, we thank you for our city. We pray protection for our first responders and all those that are serving today. And we thank you in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Please face the flag. The mayor's going to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. This time, I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order, and we'll start with our roll call.
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Councilman Crawford?
Here.
Councilwoman Sarice?
Here.
Councilman Reynolds?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Urschel?
Here.
Great. Thanks so much. Next item will be the approval of our minutes from the September 26 meeting. Do I have a motion for that?
I have to take out the minutes.
Motion by Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a second?
I'd love to second, please.
Second by Councilwoman Sarice. Any questions or comments before we call the vote? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sarice?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We don't have any special presentations tonight. I'd just like to apologize to the folks in the audience that were starting late. We did meet earlier with our Budget Committee meeting from 2:30 to 4:30, and then we had a special session from 4:30 to 6:00 as well. So, we're kind of in the middle of our day here with you folks. So, thank you for being patient with us. All right, next item here is Audience Comments. And if you'd like to address the council, feel free to come up to the podium. Please state your name and address, and you have three to five minutes to present some items to the council.
My name is Curtis Simons. I am living in Virginia, in fact, Virginia. I want to talk to the council. First of all, I want to say to the council, thank you very much. I'm here for Central State's Homecoming. I like the sign out on the highway. You know, welcome in, folks. You're going to get a lot of crowds. There'll be a lot of business taking place. Also, for the council's sake, if you're interested in watching my network, APCU Go, will be televising again live on Saturday. So, I need to go to APCUgo.tv, and you will see it. We're going to be promoting Xenia. We're going to be promoting all the communities around. And so, I hope you get a chance to watch a little bit of this telecast.
Thank you.
It's going to be pretty good. I'm here today, really, to talk about my favorite project, you know, Lexington Park. And Clayton will speak behind me. Clayton is one of these gentlemen on the ground doing a lot of the work. And one of the things, you know, this is consistently my time to come here, you know. Every other month, I try to stroll in. And I would just ask the council, I mean, one of the things that I'm bothered by a little bit is that I sent emails out asking, last time you guys asking, can we get a timetable or some type of support from the council, you know, on this thing? Never got an answer. You know, sent two or three emails out, never got an answer. And I'm a business guy, too. And my world is always response. It's response, okay? Whether or not you can do anything, just say, Curtis, you know what? We can't do anything. Here's where we're at, blah, blah, blah. That's fine. All right, we can understand. But just respond. That's all I'm asking. Just respond, you know? We're working our tails on, you know, to try to do. I don't understand if the council really understands how important it is to get Lexington Park back to where it was, okay? So, you know, for us, thank God, we've had someone solicit some dollars, unsolicited dollars come to us. We've raised some dollars. We have a layout now doing one court and a pickleball court behind it that we met with, Clayton met with some folks today on it, that we're going to move on it. But I'd like to know, what is the council going to do? You know, I mean, I mean, can you give us a couple dollars to help out? We've raised about $40,000 to $50,000. And we're just asking for a little bit of support. So, at the end of the day, I would like to be able to say, City Council, Lexington Park group, combined our efforts to rebuild the Lexington Park area. And all I'm trying to find out is, if it's a dime, if it's a quarter, what can we do here together? You know, I just can't seem to get an answer. Everybody nods their head when I come here, every time I come, every other month, but I don't get any results. And I'm a result guy. I'm a born salesman. That's what I do, you know? And so, I just want to have some response down the road of a little assistance, you know? And I'd like to show you, this is kind of, I don't know if you can see it real well, but this is what we're building right now. This court would be the big court, and then we're looking at the pickleball court right behind it. I'll make sure that Clayton can send this out to you so you get a bigger picture of it, everybody can get a handle. But, you know, it's for the community. And I'm just trying to make everyone understand is that this park has been there since I grew up, okay? And so, I'm 69 years old, you know, so I'm at the point where, you know, let me help try to build something back up once they help me, help mold my career at the end of the day. And all I'm asking for, if you've got a group that's soliciting, why is it so hard for City Council to not say, okay, well, let's give them $5,000. Let's give them, just to say a little bit of effort. I'm not trying to break the bank. I'm just asking for a little assistance, you know, down the road. That's all I'm asking for. We, as a group, are asking for. So, I hope we can go past this conversation. I'm hoping that you guys can touch base with us and say, okay, here's what we've come up with. At this point, we could do X, okay? And I'm just trying, I come from the world of partnerships. I'm just trying to see if we can partner. To me, it makes sense at the end of the day, especially for one who grew up in here. You know, I have a lot of history of building a cable system here, going to high school here, graduating from Central State, being one of the most entertaining guys in the four Hall of Fame. And when I'm in Hall of Fame across the country, I'm representing Xenia as a whole force. I don't go in there saying I'm Curtis Simons. You know, I'm going in there saying, here's where I came from. And I'm just asking the council to really give us some consideration. I mean, we're busting our bus. Clayton has done an incredible job because he's local, you know, trying to meet with different people in the council. But we're just trying to get some answers. That's all. That's my ask, you know? And if we can get that, let's move forward. So, I just want to give my two cents. I hope everybody appreciates it, and thank you very much. Take care.
Thanks, Curtis. Yes.
Good day. Good day. Great day. The market.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Very sorry. My name's Clayton Brady, 370 Hollywood Boulevard, Xenia, Ohio. Long time resident, 68 years old. Grew up with them guys back there. They were my mentors. But just to reiterate what Curtis was saying, plus, I love the markets, the marketplace, the market district y'all were planning to do. I've been everywhere I go. And they think I got something to do with it. No, I just come to meetings. I just know what's going on in my town. But that is an exceptional plan y'all have right there. But back in 2022, kind of formed a partnership with y'all, but there's different council members on there as well. So, that's why I met with James and have another meeting with Ethan coming up. So, y'all get to know me, my passion. Lexington Park is a big part of our lives, as y'all know. We wouldn't be standing here today if it wasn't for Lexington Park. We just want that park to do something for somebody else, you know what I'm saying? But we want to make it bigger and better than what we had. Because we grew up with two basketball courts. Right now, we have a plan for three pickleball courts, three basketball court courts, counting Franklin and Spring Hill. Because we're not just on one side of the town, we're going on all sides of this town. Youth basketball court, two volleyball courts, one still getting, I need a permission to do a football field out there. So, we have some flag football. I've been talking to the people on Beaver Creek that run the wheelchair basketball, having them to come over and train our kids, our handicap kids to be able to play that sport. Then, once all said and done, we're going to have camps, tournaments, and clinics. I know we had the one Charlie Green Memorial Tournament, but Charlie's, God bless his soul, rest in peace. But there's other ones that have passed away as well, and we want to honor them as much as possible. But there'll be a lot of action done, once we have the facility, there'll be a lot of action up there, positive action up there, where people are engaging in the green space, that which , you know, affects us mentally if we're not getting outside, not getting that vitamin D. It affects you mentally if you keep yourself enclosed in the house. So, we're just trying to get people out of the house, move a little bit. They're building one of the biggest pickleball facilities in Dayton, Ohio. Pickleballs just took off like when I was in school back in the early 70s, and there was this little soccer thing came about.
Right.
It was soccer.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christine Ruff. I live at 722 Vine Street in Little Line. And I was wondering if you guys were aware of what moved into the old little, the old Casano's place?
Casano's?
Nobody knows. It's called the Pink Velvet Lounge. It's right beside my house. And in all honesty, it doesn't look too sweet, honey. That's their advertisements. I'm not allowed to sleep any, on the weekends anymore, okay? I'm not allowed to sleep because I called the cops several times about the noise. They seem aggravated. I'll show you what they seem aggravated about because I'm a 51-year-old woman, and I am not up at 5, or 2 o'clock in the morning usually. Um, oh, my goodness. I just had it recorded, a live recording the other night, and I don't know why I can't play it right now. Here it is. Um, man. Hold on. All these cars are backed in crazy, um, by the butt, okay, so they can leave early. And, hold on, I'm really, I know I have time. I close this one up. It's very loud, beeping, yelling. There was a fight there this past weekend. Um, the police were called because their gun was, um...
Yeah. I was just going to say, stay at the podium. Let me tell you why. Because we're presenting this live.
I said video.
And this is important for the things you have.
This video is very important because it is so loud. At 2:00 in the morning, there's people yelling, screaming. The horns are going off at 2:00 a.m., right outside my window. The police were called this past weekend. They said there were overcapacity. They cleared it up. But then, they had another call or something. No one monitored it. It got louder. And then, there was the fight. Over 100 people. I mean, I have gone to the Green County Police Department. They pointed a finger over here. Went to the Xenia Police Department. Everyone's pointing fingers everywhere else. I don't know what to do. I've written the Health Department as well because they're overcapacity. And I haven't received anything. I truly believe it's a circle. And there's, they do not allow alcohol yet, if you are aware of where they are. The alcohol is right on the next corner. And there have been a lot of trash and litter up in that parking lot because of them. Nobody seems to care. Now, this music is just bouncing right off the buildings. And the cops say, oh, it's not that loud. Yes, it is. What can I do? I have an 18-year-old trying to go to school. This is her senior year. They're about to go off tonight. If you want to go by there and check them out. There's cars backed in so they can leave properly when there's something going down. Figure that out. This has been ongoing, and I don't know what else. I don't know who allowed this business in Xenia because this is not the type that I see that anyone wants in their town. I didn't think that you were aware. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Just to comment to everyone in the, in the audience, during the Audience Comments section, we're here to listen to you folks and present. And then, at the end of our meeting, when we have our council comments, we'll probably have some discussion about those things. But we hold those times of discussion until the end, until the end of the meeting. But thank you for coming tonight. Would anyone else like to come and present an item to the council? Judge McNamee, thank you.
Just real quick, I'll wait. I'll be with Dave McNamee, 101 North Port Street, Xenius Municipal Court. Just wanted to let everybody here know what an outstanding job that has been taking place over at the bump out, the security bump out that Keith, Chris have been amazing. In addition to the day-to-day activities that it takes to keep that building going, they've been doing great at making sure there's been as little disruption as possible. Ian's doing a fantastic job. So, I just wanted to say thank you. They're doing great.
Great. Thanks, Judge. All right, anyone else at this time? All right, that'll end our time of Audience Comments. This time, we're going to move to Old Business. The first item that we have is Ordnance 2024-25. This will be a public hearing with this ordinance as well. And this is amending the city's traffic code as contained in Part IV of the Xenia City Code. And this was introduced by Councilwoman Sarice on 9/26/2024. I'm going to ask our Law Director if you'd make a few comments here before we go to our public hearing.
Well, I warned you all there'd be a pop quiz.
Right. James did ask me today about that.
I did.
Did it. Sorry. I know you all read it. This is a complete rewrite of our traffic code. The goal with this rewrite was several things. Our current traffic code has four titles. This has six. Attempt was made to better organize what we had, to add missing state law sections that we didn't have, and to address some local issues that have come up that weren't addressed. So, I did try and color code this for you. Black was existing state law. Anything of red was new code sections, but sections that are based on existing state law, but for whatever reason, weren't in our code. Blue was existing local traffic code regulations, and then green indicated new. We're hoping with this rewrite that two things happen. One, because this is now, I've updated this entire thing, twice a year I will go through and make sure it's up to date. That enables us to make sure that our PD and our court have the most up-to-date traffic code and in line with state code as we can get it. That also helps me keep track of what changes have been made in state traffic law to be able to better inform the PD of any of those changes. Second goal, because this is now more comprehensive and it has more of what we were missing, this will allow the PD, when they write a charge, to cite both the state and local. If it's a minor misdemeanor or something that's not going to carry any jail time, the judge will then have the option of dismissing the state law charge, going with the city code charge. That means the fine money stays here, which helps support the city, the court, who's actually dealing with these charges rather than all the money going to the state and into state funds. One of the other things I wanted to bring to your attention, if you recall at the last meeting, I did mention, we, I've added a new section here regarding portable basketball hoops and other portable recreational. And I had shared with you that it was a city resident that had brought to my attention that we were missing that. You do have a letter that I believe the president will read into the record tonight from her. Thanks to her and letting me know, she, unfortunately, she hit one of these, caused a great deal of damage to her vehicle. But these things should not be out in the streets. They are nuisance. They do pose a danger to the traveling public. So, that was something that we needed to address, and we didn't have in our code. So, that did get added. As you've all read it, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions you have?
Questions or comments, counsel? Go ahead, James.
So, on the redirecting of state funds, if the state is aware of that, does that, does that have an unintended impact on some other aspect of what we may have as a city?
No, because it's really just how you, if you cite something under state law, then for almost every penalty in state law, there is direction onto where those funds go at the state level because it's a state law violation. When it's a city law violation, those funds then stay here and can help fund the operations of the court who's dealing with the charges.
Sure, sure. So, the state isn't budgeting, looking for that money?
No.
Okay, got it. Makes sense. Thank you.
Just for background, for maybe some folks in the audience as well, there was a time period where, where we, as a municipality, removed much of our traffic code as well as our, our criminal code as well.
Most, yeah.
Could you just go over some of the background and why that occurred and why, what's, you know, why we're bringing it back?
Yeah. That, that happened here in 96. I think a lot of the cities that use American Legal Publishing for their code, that was done in the 90s. Most, a lot of cities did that. The reason why there was some case law that had come out of the State Supreme Court at that time, if you put somebody in jail, and it's on a city charge cited under city code, the city pays for that person to be in jail. If they're cited under state law, the state pays for that person to be in jail. You cannot, and I don't know if you remember, this was kind of big news, maybe just nerds that were in law school. It was big news. I don't know. But what the state said was, you cannot jail people for not paying fines and costs anymore. So, a lot of that became, if someone goes to jail on city code section, and they're indigent or they don't have money, city's on the hook for that. You're not going to get it back. So, what a lot of cities did in the 90s was, they just wiped anything that carried potential jail time off, off their books. So, there was no city code, anything with potential jail time. So, that's what happened here. A lot of cities did that. We were missing a lot more than just that. And, you know, if you're not doing your traffic code in-house, if you're relying on a third party to do it, then they're not, they're doing, and a lot of, if you saw how our code was written, it was generic because it was used multiple other cities, which I get that they do that because they serve a so many cities. But this is now specific to us, to the city and the issues we have here.
Great. Thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and go into a time of a public hearing on this ordinance. And then, after that, we'll go ahead and look for a motion in a second as well, too. So, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. If you have any comments that you'd like to address the council, and with regards to this coast, please come to the podium.
Good evening again. Dave McNamee, 101 North Port Street, Xenius Municipal Court. I'm very happy that this is now to this stage. As a judge, my responsibility is administrative justice, but also I have responsibilities to do my part to see that that's done in the most efficient and effective way for the city. I went to thank Law Director Fisher for putting this together. I know it took a lot of work to get that done. And I think it'll, you know, benefit the city in the long run. And I do know that every I will be dotted, every T will be crossed, and certainly organized down to the nth degree if Law Director Fisher had anything to do with it. Again, just want to say thank you.
Great. Thanks, Judge. And Judge, thanks for coming and sharing with us tonight as well, too. Would anyone else like to come and address the council? I'd like to read in the record the letter that the Law Director referenced. This is from Cindy Oakley, and she stated in here that she's a Xenia resident of 60 years, I believe. And as part of her email, we also had her addresses, too. So, we'll get that into the record. But let me just read what she said. She said, Dear Ms. Fisher, thank you for investigating my concern regarding the portable basketball hoops. As you know, this summer, I accidentally ran into a portable basketball net that was sitting out in the street in Old Arrowhead. See photo one attached. It was one of five such basketball hoops placed on the street on Arapaho Drive at that time. Note that the one I did not manage to dodge was actually on the corner of Irkroy and Arapaho, and was right, righted, it was uprighted after the accident in June and remains sitting there to this day. Because I was thinking of going the route of small claims court to ask the owners of the basketball hoop to pay my deductible on my car insurance, I wanted to make sure what the law in Xenia was regarding basketball hoops before I went to court. The police officers who took my complaint didn't know. My damages were over $6,000 to my car. I think six cement blocks were placed on the base of the goalpost, which was out in the street about three feet. The owners were not given a ticket or, to my knowledge, an advisement to get their basketball goal out of the street. On my own, I did some thorough reading of the city's website regarding street obstructions, but nothing I found really pertained to the issue. The closest thing I read was that games were not allowed to be played in the street under Code 401.1. Since the city has no ordinance or law on the books that specifically states that portable basketball hoops are not permitted in the street, I think it would be a good idea to spell it out for Xenia citizens who are both drivers and owners of basketball hoops. Picture two is an example of a house, two houses down the same street with yet another basketball hoop in the street. The proposed language you suggest and being presented here tonight to amend the city's traffic code satisfies my interest on the issue, and I urge it to be adopted. Thank you very much for working on this problem. Sincerely, with all regards, Cindy Oakley, Xenia City Resident of 60 Years. Thank you. All right. Any other comments before we close the public hearing? All right. At this time, the public hearing is closed. Would someone like to make a motion to approve this ordinance? Councilwoman Sarice, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I would, please. Thank you.
All right. Moved by Councilwoman Sarice. She introduced our last meeting. Would someone like to make a second to that?
Second.
Second by Councilman Reynolds. Any comments or questions here before we do so? So, the overwhelming part of this ordinance is bringing the state code, Ohio revised code, into our city code. I just make a comment to the, to the citizens that there are a few items that are specific to us in Xenia. And since we're a home rule city, we have the right to do that. We're not constraining public law. But where public law is silent, we have the opportunity to bring some of those specifics in as well, too.
This will go into effect if council adopts it on November 9. And we'll, I'll work with our PR coordinator, Jamie, to do some public outreach, the things about the portable basketball hoops, kids playing in the streets, anything that's new, that's local, we'll make an effort to get the word out.
The four-wheelers in the yards?
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Real fast, Will. One question. For the houses that we know that have these hoops, will they be notified before the law goes into effect?
I'm hoping.
That is the, so I believe we did a public social media announcement this week. Jamie put that together. Our goal is to really just make this as low impact as possible. We're just trying to keep people safe, get things out of the public right of ways, and we want to come there.
Sure, James, please go ahead. Council Crawford?
Yeah, I, I want to be careful how I say this. Much of these basketball courts are where they're at because parents want to keep an eye on their kids. We're in an environment where it's different than it was, and I think than it was just, say, 20 years ago even. But I, I would like to see just a pause before we react, particularly, and for me, on the less fortunate sides of town that are viewed, I see basketball courts, they're everywhere. They're, they're, it's just, this was not just a one-off. They're everywhere, and they're all through the city. They're on the east side. They're on the west side. They're on the, I don't know about the north side so much, but they're on the south side. And these, these kids understand their streets. I haven't heard of a kid getting run over. Is there anything we can possibly consider on that particular issue to give a little bit more time on this one?
Well, let me respond to that. We have a duty to keep our streets free and clear of obstructions. Basketball hoops in the street, particularly when they're weighted down with bricks, as you saw in these pictures, those are an obstruction. Those have to be removed.
Okay.
Kids playing in the street, that should not be happening. Park your car in the street, put the basketball hoop in the driveway.
It's, I would just add, not only is this a public safety issue, it's also a practical issue. We had a call just this week where an entire street was missed for trash pickup because the trash truck could not get down the street because the basketball hoop was in it. So, there are, there are a whole variety of practical reasons.
And I understand. I understand. I was just...
Even beyond safety. And that's happened multiple times where rumpie has not been able to navigate a street to pick up people's trash because of these things as well.
Okay. It was, it was a thought, and I'm waiting a flag. And a weight and a flag, if you shoot it down, that's great. But I'm speaking for an entire, the entire city of parents that keep an eye on their children.
That's what I would encourage parents to do. And I get they want to keep an eye. Move your car, park it along the street, let the kids play with the hoop in the driveway.
In fact, they have driveways.
Don't have them playing in the street.
Some of these hoops are where there are no driveways. I live on a side of town where a good two-thirds of those, of those, I would say a third of those houses do not have driveways. So, well said. I respect what you have to say. And I respect the law, what you've put together. Appreciate the work you've done. But that was the only piece that I thought I'd speak and ask for at least some concession toward. If you're going to send notices out, make sure you do send them out. Particularly to the east side of town. Thank you.
Yeah, we will. And we put, if you read the section, it's 41005 in the proposed rewrite, we won't be taking them. Public service will pick them up and put them in the yard, get them out of the way. Now, if it's a repeat offender, we keep having to move it, then public service has the discretion to take it if you keep putting it back out in the street.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urshul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is ordinance 2024-26. This is amending Chapter 872 of the City's Business Regulation and Taxation Code prohibit the establishment of adult-use cannabis operators, including cultivators, processors, and dispensaries within the City of Xenia as permitted by Ohio Revised Code Section 3780.25. And this was introduced by Councilman Crawford at our last meeting. We will be having a public hearing on this. And then we'll go ahead and call for a motion in a second at that time. Before I do this, I'm going to let the City Law Director or City Assistant Manager, if you folks would like to make a few comments about this before we go forward.
Sure. We went from traffic to cannabis.
Right.
Basically, what this ordinance does, when medical marijuana became legal in Ohio, all municipalities were given the option of whether or not to allow cultivators, processors, and dispensaries within the city. City of Xenia chose to say no, no medical marijuana in the city. What this ordinance does is adds adult-use cannabis to that prohibition. Many of the issues that existed because of medical marijuana, the conflicts that we have between state and federal, there are a number of federal regulations the city is still subject to because we get federal grant money. So the conflict between federal and state still exists. Many of the discrepancies still exist. So what we're recommending, right now, the state hasn't even really put out regulations for adult-use cannabis. Adult-use cannabis is now operating under the rules for medical, which is weird. But if you've seen the paper, a lot of local communities are doing this. We are recommending that we also prohibit cultivation, processing, and dispensaries for non-medical or adult-use cannabis. So basically what we did, it's the same chapter as the medical, Chapter 872 in the business regs. And we've just added adult-use cannabis to the prohibitions that already exist for medical.
All right, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and go to the public hearing. If anyone has anything that they would like to address the council with regards to this ordinance, please come to the podium and state your name and address. And you have three to five minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, Xenia City Council. My name is Thomas Scrivenson. And I rise this evening to give you a perspective on the ordinance that you're about to consider. You must remember that the voters in this state approved not only medical use, but personal private use. And they see it, the same as cigarettes, alcohol, wine, beer, and everything else. So for you to single these individuals out who are supposed to be cultivators, processors, and dispensaries, it's either you're going to let the money go to the state or you're going to let the money go to the cartel. So it's your choice. That's my position. Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy. Anyone else like to come and address the council? All right, at this time, I'm closing the public hearing.
And I would just add, if you read in the ordinance, this does not prohibit or limit the home grow that's authorized under the statute. It doesn't prohibit use. It just prohibits basically the sale and production.
So per our constitutional change, we all have a constitutional right to home growing. And we have a constitutional right to personal use within some boundaries.
And I'd just remind everyone, too, home grow doesn't mean you can plant it in your flower bed to be inside, in a lock, secure area.
No comments, please. The con section, public hearing is over at this time. Thank you. All right, this was introduced by Councilman Crawford. Would you like to make a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-26, amending the chapter of 872.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Councilman Reynolds. Comments or questions here from council before we call vote?
I would just make one comment, which is that though voters in Ohio did approve, voters in Xenia did not. It was voted against by our residents.
Over by majority, that's correct.
Yep, 54% of Xenians voted no. Something in that realm.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urshul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is under New Business. This will be ordinance 2024-27. And this is an emergency ordinance. It's authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $11 million of bonds for the purpose of paying a portion of the cost of, A, utility improvements, including water, sanitary sewer, stormwater, electric, natural gas, and telecom. B, roadway and streetscape improvements, including lane reductions, lane width reductions on street parking, intersection modifications, pedestrian and bicycle facilities, curb, sidewalk, street lighting, and landscaping. C, demolition and site preparation for roadway, water, stormwater, sidewalk, on-street parking, and streetscape improvements. D, construction of green spaces and other public spaces for the promenade area, the King Street sitting area, and the central green space area. And E, other public amenities, including fountains, fireplaces, boardwalks, and entertainment stages within and near to the proposed Market District in the Xenia Town Square, and other matters related to such bonds and declaring an emergency.
I did, I didn't read that.
That's fine. I did read it. Mr. Finance Director, if you want to give us some background on this before we move?
Yes, thank you, sir. Staff, council, Dylan, the CIC, a whole group of people have been working really hard to get this Market District project across the finish line. And tonight, we're requesting that council authorize the issuance of bonds. As you could see from the title there alone, there are a lot of improvements that are included as a part of this project, public improvements. Here, the project is estimated to cost about $9.5 million. We're asking for an amount not to exceed $11 million because that amount includes issuance costs. That's bond counsel, it's legal fees, it's underwriters and financial advisors. But the other portion that's the most significant on top of that is that we're planning to capitalize the interest, which basically means that we're deferring payment of those interests for the first few years after the bonds are issued. And what that does is allows the construction to happen, the private investment to happen at the site, which will create value on which we can use some of the tax financing tools, or public financing tools, to pay for some of the debt service. So the total project is estimated at $9.5 million. The, there are a few tools that we're planning to implement to pay for the debt service on this bond issue. There's a CRA that would encompass the entire district, which would defer or abate taxes for the first 15 years.
Ryan, for our audience?
Community reinvestment area. And the whole Market District area qualifies in a pre-94 CRA area. The taxes on the improved value at the site would be abated for the first 15 years. There would be what's called a new community authority that would be established. And they would essentially assess fees on the valuation that are equal to or maybe slightly greater than what the taxes would be. And those dollars go into a specific fund and that fund is then used to pay for the debt service. There are also a couple of different types of tax increment financing that we intend to employ at the site. And those would start to go into effect in years 16 to 30. And so on the back end, we would use the TIF, the tax increment financing, to take some of those improved values and the increment on those improved values and those taxes are then diverted into a special fund again to pay for the debt service. So the idea of the plan is that the value, the private investment at the site, which, what we have in the model is about $72 million. In the end, we're hoping that it's far more than that. But if it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about $72 million, then it would be sufficient to cover the public infrastructure debt service that's being created here. And so we're optimistic that that's going to, that that's going to be created and generated. There is some risk here in that if that value isn't created, if the private investment doesn't happen, then there's no increment value or there's no dollars to be, to be had from the new community authority on the increase in values either. And that would mean that then the city would have to subsidize some of those debt service payments. And so there is some risk. Now, there will be infrastructure in place that makes that property far more valuable. So at some point in the fairly near future, we're confident there's going to be investment, going to be significant investment at the site. And that investment will help to pay for the public infrastructure that's going in. The debt service is over a 30-year period. It's estimated to cost approximately $650,000 annually in debt service. We are taking this to market on October 22nd, if council were to approve tonight. And then we would plan to close on the bonds on November 5th. At that point, there would be dollars available for the project. There are some dollars that have already been spent for things like engineering, legal services. There are a host of expenses that have already been incurred by the city. Those can actually be repaid when we receive those dollars on November 5th. So there is some reimbursement legislation in this bond ordinance that allows us to recoup some of those dollars that have already been spent. So some of that $9.5 million that's here in the agenda item has actually already happened, already been spent. And this allows us to refund or reimburse ourselves for some of those expenses. We're asking that this be passed as an emergency here tonight. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Before we take a motion on this, let's just give the council an opportunity to ask any questions here. The Finance Director?
So we'll just say that, I'm going to make a few statements. And Ryan, feel free to add to those that if we could have had private investment do all this public infrastructure work, that would, obviously, we would have pursued that. However, through a lot of investigation, the feedback we got was that doing this public infrastructure work would greatly accelerate and bring in the private investment that we're looking to get at this point. And that the tools, the economic development tools that we're going to be using here, the new community authority, the CRA, and those type of items are allowed by the state legislature. And that there have been a number of other communities that have used those and have very successful developments around here. Maybe you could comment on what a few of those are in the area?
Yeah, so tax increment financing was used at DeGreen, for example. That's probably one of the more prominent developments that most people in our area would be familiar with. They were used there. I will say also that this isn't a tool that we've used in the past to any great extent. In fact, it's been about 30 years, actually a little longer than that, since we've implemented a TIF. We do have a CRA on a couple of properties, like three or four. These are very small amounts where somebody's invested in a home and they're getting a small abatement. But this is the first project of significance, really, since the '74 tornado, that we've used these tools for. So we've really, we've tried to ensure that we are taking advantage of some of these opportunities that are afforded to us in the code. And we're using it here because it's really what this type of tool is meant for. An area where there's been a lack of investment for a long period of time and it's difficult to make these things happen without these types of tools. And so, yeah, I think it's the perfect, it's the perfect solution to move forward a project like this in our downtown that's really going to be transformational that otherwise wouldn't happen without these kind of tools.
Right. Another area was on Dayton Yell Springs and Fairborn to the east of 675.
Yep.
It was funded, all the public infrastructure was funded through these tools as well, too. So, great.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
I'll second him.
Seconded by Councilman Dean. Questions or comments? Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urshul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is ordinance 2024-28. This is also an emergency. Authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $5 million of bonds for the purpose of refunding bonds originally issued for the purpose of paying part of the cost of renovating the city hall and constructing, installing, and equipping building improvements known as the Whiteman Lot, Administration Building, and other matters related to such bonds and declaring an emergency. Mr. Finance Director?
Yeah, first I'll just apologize to the council as I kind of introduce this. When, because we're refund, or because we're issuing bonds, one of the best times to do a refunding of a previous issue is when you're issuing bonds because you can piggyback on some of the issuance costs, some of the bond counsel, all those types of fees that you would incur. You can kind of wrap those into one issue and it saves you some money. These are, these are meant to give us the opportunity, or this ordinance affords us the opportunity to refund the bonds that were issued when this building was constructed, when we rehabbed the Justice Center. To be honest, I don't think that the numbers are going to come back and tell us that this is the right thing to do. But our financial advisor, our bond counsel, said, hey, if we're going to go out to the market, we might as well include this in case the pricing comes back, that you can save some dollars. You're not going to have a better opportunity than this to refund these, this issue. I did not realize at the time that that meant a separate ordinance and a combining ordinance that you're going to see later tonight. I thought it would all be rolled into one and be a little tidier and neater than how this played out. So I know this may have taken some of you by surprise. My intent was to simply give us an option so that when we go to issue the bonds, if the pricing looks like it's going to be beneficial for us and save us some money, then we go ahead and do it. The bonds that were issued previously, the rates kind of jump from year to year. The bonds that were issued previously, their rates kinda jump from year to year. Right now, they're at 3%. They're gonna go up to 4% in '26, and then go back down to 3.5 in 2036. I don't think ultimately we're gonna end up with a rate that's better than where those sit today. But we're requesting tonight an authorization of the issuance of these bonds, really just in best-case scenario, we get some great rates that come back when they're pricing this thing, and we can save some dollars. The savings is not gonna be significant if we do achieve some savings in this issue, but I'll certainly keep council in the loop as to where that pricing comes back. Again, right now, I would say this is probably not going to be something that saves us dollars, but I think it makes sense to include it, to pass the legislation just to see where things land as we go out to bid.
It might.
It could. It's possible. So we're requesting tonight, the outstanding bonds are right in the neighborhood of $5 million. They would be paid off in 2039, so we're about 15 years away. It was, yeah, it was issued back in 2015, so we're not quite halfway through that period. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but this is really just an opportunity to potentially save some money on debt service if the rates come back in a favorable way.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Therese. Any questions or comments now for the finance director or other members of our staff?
Appreciate you doing the due diligence. I know. That's a lot of work for this, but thank you.
Mr. Finance Director, I have a question. So I understand in layman's terms, which, essentially, this is just a refi.
Yep, it's just a refinance like you would do on your home, and if the numbers come back at a rate that's better than where we're at today, and you throw the closing costs and all those things in, and it still saves us some money, then we would proceed with it.
Nice work. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Therese?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Urshel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is ordinance 2024-29. This is also an emergency. Authorizing the consolidation of up to two bond issues of the city of Zeno, Ohio, and other matters related to such consolidated bond issue and declaring an emergency. Mr. Finance Director.
Yeah, so this is really just a formality. It's the legal process that is required to consolidate those two bond issues. So it's what bond legislation or bond council has prepared for us in order for us to proceed in combining these two bond issues if it is in fact advantageous to refund the prior issues from 2015. So again, we're requesting that as an emergency tonight.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval? Moved by Councilman Dean. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Any other questions or comments? All right, let's call the vote.
Just to confirm, that's Dean, and then with Reynolds the second.
Reynolds, that's correct.
Thank you. Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Therese?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Urshel?
Aye.
Quickly followed by Councilman Crawford there, too. All right.
Solid third place.
That's right. Next is ordinance 2024-30. This is also an emergency. Amending ordinance 2024-21 to provide appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Zeno, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Council President. There are two different reasons that we are requesting an additional appropriation here this evening. The first is related to an issue that was brought to council a couple of weeks ago for traveling dispatch services. Council authorized that contract. I saw actually just today that I think that contract is ready to go. I think the law director has worked hard to get those kinks ironed out. And so we're requesting tonight an appropriation to authorize those contractual services. Obviously, most of our expenditures and dispatch for these types of services are typically in a personnel bucket in the way that the ordinance is structured. These expenditures have to be classified as operating rather than personnel, and so we're requesting a $205,000 appropriation to fund those services. And the second request is related to the redevelopment effort at the AV Building. There's a new owner of that building. He's working on a plan to improve that building. There is an opportunity to bring some community investment grant dollars from the county to that project to make that more feasible. And so we're requesting an appropriation of $100,000, which is equal to that CIG grant that would be obtained from the county. Essentially, the way that would work is that we would, the city, pay for that expenditure to the property owner and then be reimbursed by the county, and so we would have to appropriate on our books in order to facilitate that. So we're optimistic about that project. Obviously, nothing is a sure thing, but this is probably the most promising of the projects that's been proposed there. I think we've got a property owner who's committed to moving it forward, and the CIG grant is one of the tools that can help get that across the finish line, so we're requesting that appropriation this evening.
Great. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Crawford.
Can I ask a question before this?
Yes, you may now ask some questions.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Therese. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm curious. What is the Greene County Student Robotics Center?
So that is a robotics club that he currently operates at the Ross Research Center.
Okay.
And it is my understanding that at some point in the next 12 to 24 months, he will be leaving that facility and then moving that to the AV Building.
Okay. Does it, is it by chance? I'm just curious. Is it in conjunction with any of the area school programs, like the robotics program, the Greene County Career Center, and/or any of the STEM programs that are in our different school districts?
I know it's well advertised, well attended. I'm sure there's partnerships, but I can't speak exactly to which ones they partner with. They're very well-known.
Okay. Just wasn't sure if it...
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Therese?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Urshel?
Aye.
Next item is resolution 2024-57. Authorizing the submission of an application to Greene County for a community investment grant on behalf of the AV Exchange Building Redevelopment Project and authorizing a letter of support to be filed with the project's Vibrant Communities Grant Application. Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Thank you. So the irony of my first resolution being about the program I created at the county is not lost on me. But this is a fantastic...
Funny you should be here with us.
Right. This is a fantastic program, and what it's designed to do is incentivize local jurisdictions with economic development or community development dollars to help with projects. Sometimes those are speculative, sometimes those are just designed to help get a project over the finish line. So in this case, the AV Building, and it's pronounced in two different ways throughout town, probably 50/50 percent AV and EV, but it's been long, it's been this anchor with the community for a long time. It's a beautiful building, but it needs some love. And so recently, Dr. Ross McNutt purchased the property, plans on doing a lot of great things, several businesses, space for the robotics club, a food court, retail services, and then also potentially using it for an expanded maker space for the library. So this is a big project amounting to $3.7 million. And so he, every little dollar counts for this project, so we are on behalf of him as kind of a pass-through. This is to ask for $100,000 from this program, the CIG program through the county. Additionally, the city has also been asked to provide letters of support for the Jobs Ohio Vibrant Communities Grant, so this is also to provide that letter of support. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Does someone want to make a motion for approval?
I'm...
Mayor May, go ahead.
Let's go to motion.
I'll second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Any other questions or comments?
So, you know, as part of our next plan, it was quite an extensive amount of work that
was done looking at the Hub District, and the AV Building was a portion of that. And as a matter of fact, we got a grant for Community Development Planning Week where we had folks come in and talk to folks in the area about what they would like to see down there at the Hub area, by the Bike Hub, around the Bike Hub, and the plans that they potentially may be executing here fit in very well with that whole concept there for the Hub District. That would make a great second anchor to the Market District here to the north of that. Having that to the south would really benefit the older historic downtown area because you'd have those two anchors on either side of that and encourage a lot of flow of commercial business and traffic, retail items going back and forth through that area there, too. The city had also purchased some of the private dilapidated property behind that building a few years ago and was able to tear down some properties that were just in disrepair and were creating a bad use in that area as well, too. So that's just, you know, good timing for that. There's been a lot of, ever since that's happened, there's been a lot more foot traffic down there in the Bike Hub and that area as well, too. And so there's just a lot of great promise with this. So thanks, you guys, for working to encourage that. I know we have some items in our proposed 2025 budget that may complement some of the work there as well, too, and so that was something else for us to be looking at. So, great. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Therese?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Urshel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is resolution 2024-58. Accepting the recommendation of the Greene County Tax Incentive Review Council for 2024. Mr. Assistant City Managers.
Yes, so this is required by ORC. Essentially, the Turk or the Tax Incentive Review Council meets once a year. It's a sort of collaboration from all the different jurisdictions that have active tax incentive agreements for the city. Mr. Steve Brodsky attends on our behalf, and we basically just present the raw numbers, and then we get a thumbs up, thumbs down from the committee. We have 60 days once we get that approval to provide that to the state. We do, according to the finance director's previous statements, have five current tax incentive agreements. These are relatively small, so we have a OEZ agreement with the Toshi Hospitality, the Hampton Inn, for 70% abatement of applicable property tax. We also have a 70% abatement of applicable property tax for CIL isotopes, which is a huge business for us. It's thriving, excellent. And then we also have three smaller residential CRAs throughout the community. So the, I think it was a unanimous vote of support, and we're just asking that you pass that, but I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Great. Thank you. Well, I think if I remember correctly, CIL, maybe Steve can talk about that as well, too. Part of our audit process that we do is we also list the top 10 entities in terms of tax income, and I think CIL is up there in our top five right now.
Yeah, so you gotta be kinda careful. So the withholding, they're a major withholder for us. Obviously, on the income side, we can't speak to any of those sides of them as a corporation and what they would pay in tax.
Right, right.
But they are a significant employer in the community, one of our top employers, certainly. And they also are a significant water user. There are a lot of terrific benefits of having CIL here in our community.
Right. So these types of tax incentives are a real benefit to bring those type of employers here into our area, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Councilman Crawford?
Just have a quick question. It's more about the CRA and how is that, who makes the decision of where the CRA is applied? Because I did not know that we were giving that to moderate and low-income areas of our community. And I see the CRA is applied to East Church Street. I wouldn't call it June Drive. I would call that moderate.
So council...
In East Market.
Council approves the community reinvestment area. So they recently amended the pre-94 area, expanded that to cover a good portion of the city. It's not the entire city, but there are a good number of residents who would qualify in certain areas throughout the city for that program, so...
So that decision on expansion and inclusion is done at what level?
At the council level. At the city council.
And who initiates that? I mean, who gets...
What happens if you're talking residential CRA?
Yeah.
You can apply for CRA tax abatement for improvements that you make to residential property. Remodeling or new construction in a CRA area. You have to apply for that. The property owner has to apply. For residential, it goes through the housing officer, who is our Director of Development Services, which would be the Assistant City Manager.
And that's requested by the...
Those are approved administratively by the housing officer.
And that's a...
Council approves big commercial and industrial, but the residential are approved in-house administratively.
And that's requested by either the builder or the owner?
Yes.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the actual area itself is approved by council.
Exactly.
And we only have one more amendment to the pre-94, which I think, we've had some discussions about different options there, but, yeah, the actual area is set by council. But, yeah, the process for a homeowner is just as the law director's...
Very helpful. Thank you very much. James, and once again, Ryan, let me know if I'm misspeaking here, but the importance of the pre-94, or using the term pre-94 is, since we established it that time prior to some state legislature in action, those CRAs are unilateral approval by the municipality. It doesn't require coordination with any other jurisdictions. And when we have the initial approval, we can do two amendments of that that are unilateral. And we've used one of those. So we have one final unilateral expansion of that area. And that could be to include the entire city or to establish a separate CRA district, whatever we wanted to do. We've got one more shot at that.
Before the end of the year?
No, no, no.
Exactly.
Forever.
Yeah.
Right.
Once you've made two, if you want to amend it again, it becomes a post-94.
And at that point, there are other entities that we have to have agreement with to establish those, but at this point, this is unilateral to us.
Yeah.
Is that a fair statement?
And understood, so then, but the residential's have more latitude in it. There's other considerations, there's additional considerations that are at play for the residential interest. Am I saying that right?
Well, the residential, and we can get you the actual paperwork, based on the dollar amount, there is a threshold for the dollar amount to be able to apply for one of these. You know, if you're putting $200 new shutters on your house, that's not gonna qualify. I believe that it's $5,000?
Yeah.
All right, it's a $5,000 investment. You make the application, and that's approved or denied by the housing officer. The one thing with CRAs, you have to actually make the improvements before it actually gets approved and filed with the county.
Oh, okay. Right. And you would have to do the investment and actually pay for that, and there's some return that would come after that, but you would have to fund the activity. Yeah, Steve, go ahead.
It's keeping in mind that this is for, in the case of an improvement, you're abating the improved value.
Value.
So let's say you put a $15,000 new roof on a piece of property. That's not really going to increase your property taxes.
Correct.
So in that case, the CRA really isn't helping. It's not going to give you money back for that investment. What it's doing is abating the increased value of your property tax. If you're doing a major addition to your home, and that's going to increase the property taxes, that's when a CRA makes sense.
Or if you were gonna infill, you were gonna build a new house on a vacant residential lot in the city.
So new construction could be included as a CRA?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's no question.
Right, and that's one of the principal incentives to take property that has not...
That's where you're gonna see it the most, on new construction, on a vacant lot, say.
Because the plat development, the PODs, the developers already applied for those, correct, as they were doing the developments?
Well, if it's in an area that qualifies, most of our new...
Developments aren't in the CRA.
Are outside of CRA.
District. Yeah, most of the new subdivisions aren't in the CRA.
Okay.
Because it's to encourage redevelopment. That's what a CRA is supposed to do. Areas that have already been built out or maybe are getting a little bit run down, so it'd be more info. If you have a vacant lot on Second Street, you have a vacant lot on Church Street, getting a new home on one of those lots.
Okay. And that's one of the reasons why we are using the CRA in the Market District, right, from an individual perspective?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, who would like to move for approval?
I'm in for approval.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds?
I second it.
Seconded by Councilman Crawford.
Crawford, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mace?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is Resolution 2024-59, authorizing the execution of a construction manager at-risk agreement with Dillon LLC for public infrastructure improvements at the Market District. Mr. City Manager, Assistant City Manager, please.
Yeah, so this is a really exciting resolution here. This basically starts, you know, moving some more dirt around by entering into an agreement with Dillon LLC. Basically, this would, they would provide not-to-exceed budget amounts for public infrastructure improvements, construction management services, and a host of other activities to basically go ahead and start the construction out there. So this is a really important agreement. And with that, we have a not-to-exceed amount of $11,579,000.
All right.
Mr. President, move to adopt resolution.
All right, Councilman Reynolds moves to adopt this resolution. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any comments or questions? This is a historic event that has been years in the making. And Steve, thanks for having that initial contact with the Dillon Corporation, which happened, I don't know how many years ago was that?
Beginning of COVID, so.
Yeah. Yep. And to all the staff that has worked tirelessly, legal aspects, procedural aspects, the construction aspects, the financial funding aspects, and coordination with a plethora of different players in this process to get us to the point where we have a major development corporation assigned to be a construction manager and a partner in this endeavor. And we see some more infrastructure dirt turn this fall, but a lot more next spring. And in five years from now, downtown is going to be an amazing place to come and commune with the rest of your neighbors and the folks in the community and your family. And it's just going to, it's just going to transform Xenia. So thanks to all the folks on the staff that had the vision for this and for some of you old timers on council. Wes and Mira, and that's right, Levi, a lot of the rest of us are much newer. And Councilwoman Scrivens was on council at that time as well too, just to help shepherd all this through the process.
You called me mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Mayor.
Yes.
You created a name for me.
We got a new one there before, yeah, that's right. Andy just first commissioner.
That's right. This whole-
I'm going to call myself that mountain mayor.
So I just want to thank all you, all you folks who've been involved with this and just for having some vision for our city. And also for Mr. Dillon, who said, you know, I'm looking for a few key projects where I can come into a community and just bless that community by transforming its downtown so that it will be a drawing place to that community and a central focus for that community, revitalize the community as well. And for him having that vision and walking through this process with us, he hasn't faltered one step during this whole process. And it's a personal dream of his as well too, so we thank you, thank him for that as well too.
Absolutely. This time, we have a motion and second. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mace?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. All right. Next item is procedural motion, appointing the chair and at-large members to the Xenia Public Art Commission. And so I would like to recommend that for our new, actually, I'm going to ask our Assistant City Manager just to share a little bit about the purpose of this council, of the art commission and our vision for that.
Great, thank you for that. So really, this body just helps kind of solidify the culture and the community that we want to live in. It's a very important group. I've been working with Dillon and just trying to really accentuate this development as it comes in and make sure that everything is organically kind of mirroring and talking to each other. So we've had a lot of staff work. I'm actually going to have Mr. Ryan Baker maybe come up and talk a little bit about the program, if you're prepared to use.
Ryan, come on up and share with us.
So we've had over the last three, four years, I think, we've had three or four projects come to various staff members that come to the city. I think we've had some stuff on X-Rack there, projects that people want to, I don't know, install in our city. We've had a handful of murals. We've had some downtown, some at Shawnee Park. In addition to what Eric was starting to mention, the public art piece that will be planned in the Market District. And we thought it'd be great to have a consistent method and a consistent voice to kind of maybe give recommendations if it's going to have city support or to help find locations as these artists bring these projects to it. And that's kind of where it started. It's happened more and more over the last few years that we've had an ask of some sort of the city to help with art.
Yeah, so with that, I mean, I think we can take encouragement that businesses want to be here and apparently artists want to be here as well. And it may shock the council to find that we are not artists for the most part. So, you know, asking for people who are what we should have in the community, I think, makes a lot of sense. And Ryan's done a lot of work, a lot of phone calls and conversations to get this group before you today. So we're really excited about this.
And it's a good group. There may not be artists per se, but it's a good group of community-minded individuals who, you know, will be thoughtful in their considerations of what's brought to them.
Great. So I'm going to recommend that Councilwoman Seres will be our chair for this commission. And then the staff has recommended six individuals to us to make the initial composition of the commission. Matthew Arnovitz, he's a longtime property owner and commercial real estate broker. He's served with the community as a member of other boards and committees, including the Green County Port Authority. Jamie Graham, business consultant in the area, CFO for a local business and business development manager, and many of several charitable organizations in the area. Rebecca Cantrell, she has fundraising and event experience for many activities here in the county. Culture Works Grant panelist and served on local event committees and has connections with the regional art community. Brad Montgomery, longtime business and property owner with a history of community involvement, including service as the past president of both the Chamber of Commerce and Xenia Rotary. Elizabeth Betsy Harner, lifelong Xenian committed to making Xenia beautiful by displaying and honoring local artisans. And also Sherry Gasway, community focused on design and development, and she was a participant in the Next Plan Development. She has a fundraising experience and is a volunteer with the American Red Cross. So do I have a motion to establish this commission with the proposed chair and the proposed members?
I make a motion to propose or-
To approve?
To approve the art, the public art commission. Anything else?
Sounds great. Thanks, that was a motion by Councilman Crawford. I always want to use everybody's first name and I have to remember everybody's second name. That's why I pause, because I'm so used to using everyone's first name, I have to stop myself. All right, moved by Councilman Crawford, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor.
You can go with Mayor.
That's okay. Any other comments or questions? Ryan, thank you for contact. What a great group of folks and folks that are committed to our community and have a lot of wisdom. And everyone on this group wants to see us do well here and have been involved with a number of projects already in the fine arts area and stuff and some other associations. So Councilwoman Seres, you've got a good group to get started.
I just have to say, this is half the challenge right here. I'm delighted that so many people are interested in participating. I think it'd be great to be a part of reviewing and forwarding recommendations to council for the Commission of Public Art for our city. I just, I think it's exciting and it's fun. It's, you know, especially like you said, with everything that's going to be happening in our new district. And I hope this will reflect that and also demonstrate our city of hospitality. So I think it'd be a lot of fun and I appreciate your grassroots efforts and your groundwork that you've laid down and I'm looking forward to working with you. So, thank you, sir. This is great.
That's great. So the first commission chair will make the first $100,000 grant donation to the committee?
Right. And of course, that will be a bust of me.
That's right. No, actually, you don't have to make that grant.
Oh, okay, all right.
We'll make it. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mace?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item on our agenda is our appointed official reports. So Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did send out the monthly report for September earlier in the week. September was another strong month, so we're really trending in a positive direction across many funds. Most of our funds, positive things happening, especially in the income tax, income tax base and growth there. So if you get a chance, please check out that report. Also wanted to update council, we did go, we got pricing on the bond anticipation notes for the leasehold interest on the town square, the $2.8 million. That wound up at a coupon of 5.5%. It was sort of a premium, so the true interest cost is just over 5%. That's a pretty, pretty good improvement over where we were at last year when we issued these. Last October, we were at a coupon of about 6.9 and a total interest cost of 6.5. So about a 1.5% improvement in our rate here this year. So rates are coming down. The positive thing is a little higher than we'd like still, but that rate is coming down. Hopefully, that's the last time that we're issuing bonds at that rate. Ideally, we're starting to sell off some of those properties, pieces of that property here either later this year or early next year. And come next October, we'll either be financing a far smaller amount or not financing anything at all, so. But wanted to update council on those rates. I'll certainly also update council on the rates that we achieve as we go out for the bond that was just approved tonight. And certainly will let you know if the refunding was something that made sense or not. I also wanted to let city council know, had a representative from the Auditor of State's office, Joe Braden, I think many of you have met him, he stopped by my office. We have been presented with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction for our '23 report. So that's really good news. It's an award that we receive when we don't have material weaknesses, findings. There are a whole host of things, reconciliations, findings for recovery. There are a lot of different things that go into that criteria. I think we're going to try to get him over here to present the award. I know the next couple of months are pretty busy on our calendar, but I know also his. And so I'm not sure if he'll make it out or not, but was thankful to him to come over, for coming over and presenting that award. And again, it's just a testament to our entire staff and the stewardship of the city. Want to thank Jason, as I always do, he's put a lot of hard work into that report and that's paid off. So wanted to share that with council. It's always good to get recognition for good stewardship and accounting of those public funds in an excellent way, so. Wanted to share that with you and I think that's all I've got. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for the Finance Director?
And he's so nonchalant about that because it's six years in a row now that you've won that one? Or seven?
I think this is, I think this is number six.
I think this is number six. So it's a real testament to the staff you guys have in your finance department that they've gotten that.
And these are passed out to large portions. What's the percentage of the municipalities that-
I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's really small. It's like 4%, something like that.
Less than 4%?
Yeah, it's a very, it's a very small percentage.
Are giving us award.
Okay, so the first bust will be you then. That's what we'll do.
Great, thanks, Ryan.
Sure.
Madam Law Director?
Couple things, I'm going to, I'm going to do this for the Assistant City Manager since this was his first night in the hot seat, so remind him of that. Monday is a federal and city holiday, so the justice center, the court, and city buildings will be closed to the public on Monday. We will not be here. We will be here, but the offices will be closed. Second thing, I don't want to get into too much detail. I don't know if Major Osborne wants to address it. I did hear from the PD on Tuesday, the first I heard, the Pink Velvet Lounge, it's definitely on my radar. It's on my radar now and I know it's on the PD's radar. So it's, you know, a lot of times we have these issues, we wish we could take care of them overnight, we can't. I know it's being worked on. I don't know if you want to add anything or if that's enough. That's enough. It is on our radar, we will take care of it.
Okay, thank you. I think maybe another comment, I'm going to make a statement, tell me if I'm getting this straight. So just as we've added to our traffic code, we'll probably be also looking at criminal code as well in bringing those back in. So just as the traffic code was removed at a period of time, so also our criminal code was removed. And so we operate now under the Ohio Revised Code from a criminal perspective, but we do not have that, any local ordinances. We used to have a local noise ordinance, but when we removed that criminal code, we also removed that local noise ordinance. And there is no noise ordinance in the Ohio, in the Ohio Revised Code. Public nuisance, but not the noise ordinance. So my hope is that when we are bringing that local criminal code back, we'll be much more specific about the noise issues and regulations here at municipal level.
As we have more, part of the reason, I don't, this actually, surprisingly, this is not the biggest code update we've ever done. This is the first one I've ever presented to you-
In entirety, right?
In its entirety. Usually I've given it to you in chunks and we've gone through it in chunks. This, there is that provision in state law that says if there's a state traffic law, we're not allowed to really deviate from it, you have to copy it. There wasn't a lot to talk about on this. Criminal, there will be, so we will do that in chunks.
Right.
So we can certainly look at doing the part where we address noise issues first. But there's going to be a lot more council involvement, I think, in those and the general finances because there will be more local things that we want our address and deal with.
Right, great, thank you. Any questions for the Law Director? All right, Mr. Assistant City Manager?
Thank you, sir. I guess first off, just prayers for Mr. Mayorman and his family as they battle an illness at home. Hopefully, they'll be back at work very soon. But also want to give special kudos and thanks to all of our emergency responders and just city crews who just really did Yulman's work, kind of just taking care of the neighborhoods, the citizens after the storm a couple of weeks back. This is my first kind of emergency, quote unquote, with the city and I was just immensely impressed and everyone was amazing, so. Outside of that, Mr. Mayorman and I both went to the International City Managers Conference recently in the last two weeks. And very unique that usually you would expect to see a lot of panels about housing, economic development, things of that nature. None of those, but almost every single panel this year was about AI and how it is modernizing government operations and streamlining things. So that's something I think we'll need to just kind of be cognizant of as we move forward. Also want to thank staff, just been great. They've done a lot of big projects, a lot of that is proof tonight with the resolutions, ordinances that we've passed. The law and finance director have been amazing to work with and so I appreciate all the mentoring and just the help that you've given me. And outside of that, last thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention just a note of appreciation for the county. They're really helping us. I think we're going to get some positive news on the Ramada coming down the next couple of weeks. So it looks like the state's moving forward with that and should be really a big deal for the citizens to see that come down, so.
That contract and the work is done through the county, is that correct?
Correct, they've applied on our behalf, so.
Any, any questions or comments to the Assistant City Manager? Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we have council comments and reports, so we'll start with Councilwoman Seres.
I don't have anything to add at this time.
You don't have anything to talk about your commission at this point?
I'm already working on it.
Okay, you're working, that's all right, that's good. Got some sketchy, that's great. Councilman Reynolds?
Just one quick thing, Budget and Finance Committee has met twice now. Council should have its budget sometime in November. We have two more meetings to go as we will continue to work for it. I mean, we've spent roughly about 12 hours here as a group, as a committee, plus individuals reading over at home and discussing it with our Finance Director and our City Manager. So a lot of hours put into it, but it's coming along. I can't wait till we get to present it to the rest of council here shortly, so.
Great, thank you. It's been fine. Councilman Crawford?
I, the only thing I have is don't forget your late filing of taxes on this month, on the 15th. The city, the state, and the federal will be blessed this, for me personally, this year. But so anybody filing late-
The Finance Director says yes, pay your taxes.
Anyway, there's, I'm sure there's a host of people that understand why we file late, so. So, it's a business decision. But anyway, but thank you. I have nothing else to add.
Councilman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last night, the Plains Attorney Commission met and we saw two cases. Both were approved. The first one was to recommend land development code texts for standalone ERs in hospitals. And we'll be seeing that shortly coming up to council. And the second case was to extend a PUD concept plan for the Willow Green PUD off of Stevenson and US 42 and Wilson Drive. And that was also approved for an additional 12 months.
Great, great. Thanks, Levi. Mr. Vice President?
Great. Are you, that's the mayor, are you going to talk about the event this weekend? Okay, great. I'll pass that on to you. And then, just a reminder, early voting started already.
Yes.
So, I encourage everyone to definitely consider the city's renewal levy. I know as a city, staff cannot actively solicit for that, but as council members, we are allowed. That renewal has successfully renewed itself since 1960s. Is that correct?
Yeah, it started in 1959 and has been renewed every five years ever since. Yep.
Right, right. It's minimal. If I'm accurately mentioning, it's about $10 a month per homeowner?
Yeah, obviously depends on the valuation, but that's, yeah, that's probably.
About accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, what we'll use that money for is operating expenses. So that generates about a half a million dollars. Doesn't seem like a lot of money. But if it does fail, it puts us in a backward position as we try to appropriate more dollars to our streets. And that's something in Budget Committee, we talked about today, is putting the street plan together at least in the next two to three years without asking voters for additional money for the streets. So the renewal, again, it's not very much. It really helps the city out as far as operating expenses. I'll let you talk a little bit more about that. But please consider that when you go to the polls for your city. And other than that, that's really all I have. Thank you.
Great. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Couple things to go over from my schedule for the last couple of weeks. I did want to note that there was a retirement party for Julie Willis, and I was not able to attend last minute just due to illness. So thank you, Ethan, for stepping in for me. But 25 years in the finance department, and I think that is worth acknowledging tonight and to thank her publicly for her work here at the city, being a very faithful member of our team. On the 28th, had an opportunity to speak and welcome people on behalf of the city at the Hilltop Event, a great organization that's doing work with women in our community in recovery. On the 30th, participated in a meeting with Clark State Foundation Board. I don't always mention that, but sometimes I want to mention just the involvement there. Because Clark State has a presence here in Zena. They're doing a lot here. They're working with our schools. And they're doing a lot of work in Springfield right now, and I just wanted to give them an acknowledgement of the work that they're doing. On Tuesday, the 1st, October 1st, attended the Braise a Glass to Reading event, which was held out at Caesar Ford. It is a fundraising event for the library that specifically is for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. An incredible program for our kids. My kids participated in it. 60-some percent of Green County kids participate in it, get free books in the mail. So it's a great event to attend and be a part of. On Thursday, the 3rd, I spoke to a group of students from Wright State. Carolyn Jackson is a professor in nursing at Wright State, but she brings them to Zena every semester. They meet weekly out at the Chamber of Commerce, and she takes time to really get them invested in a community. What does nursing look like when you're invested in your community? So I had an opportunity to speak to them and talk about Zena, the good things that are happening here, the hard things that are happening here. Really enjoyed the discussions that we had. That same day, the Tree Committee, which is part of XREC, which I chair, we went out to two different locations to put out the placards for the different heritage trees. One at the Cemetery, Woodland Cemetery, and then another at the tree that's a residence over on Orient. These trees are almost 200 years old. They're incredible. They're beautiful to look at. So it's fun to be out there and as a committee, be out there and congratulate the folks who take care of these trees.
The life of those trees is literally the lifespan of the city.
Yes.
Yeah, it's amazing.
It really is. On Friday, the 4th, attended a town hall meeting that was out at a merge that was put on by Mobilize Recovery and Inseparable. It was a huge turnout. Lots of people that came out, different vendors that are involved with mental health and kind of a fair, as well as a town hall meeting and panel discussion about recovery, mental health, availability for people of all walks of life. So it was a really interesting event. I had a chance to give a proclamation on behalf of the city and to welcome them and thank them for coming. For fun, we went to the toy show. I wanted to mention that on the 5th, October 5th, the Greater Ohio Toy Show that our own Danielle and Rob Eldridge from the Vintage Toy Store put on. If you've not been, you are missing out. It is a packed out event. It's crazy how many people are there and how many people come from all over the country.
The largest toy show in the Midwest.
Yes. 700 vendors, and we, we invested in toys. That's all I'm going to say. And I wanted to mention, a lot of times we talk about things to do in our community, but our Green County Parks and Trails puts on a lot of events, and they put on an event Saturday night that my husband and I went to, a Night of Romance. That's right, I said it. It was a beautiful night, a dinner out at Caesar Ford Park and dinner and dancing, walking trails, candlelight. It was really an amazing thing. So if you aren't tuned in to the Parks and Trail system, please look on their website. There are things for kids to do all the time, as well as families and adults. Sorry, a couple more things. Monday, the 7th, attended the candlelight vigil that's put on by Violence Free Futures. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and so many of us gather and hear stories from survivors. And there's a candlelight vigil out at the green, and it was a beautiful night. It was, it's hard to hear some of those stories, but also amazing to hear the things that these folks have overcome and are moving forward. On Wednesday, this past Wednesday, the 9th, spoke to a class at Cedarville University, their communications class. Again, just another opportunity to talk to students about what it looks like to be involved in your local government, to advocate for your community, and how you can be involved. And then, last night, the 9th, attended Mayor's and Managers. It was hosted at, in Huber Heights. Couple of things to note that was brought up specifically is House Bill 666. That can't be good. It is. And the OML has some concerns about it. I'm going to have to do my own.
Your buildings don't have 13 floors and the house shouldn't have a bill 6677.
It's the prohibiting, to prohibit the prohibiting of asking about immigration status is the very broad. We discussed it very, very loosely, so it's just something that we need to look into and be aware of. That's what we discussed last night. And then this Saturday, of course, we do want to mention Harvest on Main. It's going to be a great show. We've got a lot of arts and craft vendors that are going to be here on East Main Street. On North Detroit, there's going to be Games for Kids. Ultimate Fiber is actually coming to make sure that we have huge TVs to show all the college football games that are happening. There's going to be the library. One Bistro is going to have food that they're serving. There's going to be a lot of food trucks. The list goes on and on. So 12 to 5 downtown, the pie eating contest. I believe there's pumpkins to be painted. There's a lot to, there's a cornhole tournament, so 12 to 5. And then right after that, you can move on down toward Devil Win and enjoy Oktoberfest here in Zena. So that will be happening as well into the evening. We've attended both and we've had a great time, very family friendly, so I hope that everybody comes out. I'm done. For now.
Oh.
It's okay.
Yes, Council Crawford, go ahead.
Well, I just want to make sure that everybody understood the prayer breakfast is this Friday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. The Mayor's Prayer Breakfast will be tomorrow morning. Doors open at 7:00 AM at Emmanuel Baptist Church on South Detroit Street, and breakfast will be served at 7:30.
There you go. And are you serving?
I am. And.
Are you cooking? That's more important, I think.
I'm going to get coffee for my table.
Some of us were there until 4 o'clock setting up.
The mayor was already serving, getting set up. Yeah, just, if you want to come, there's still individual seats available that you can come and. Great. The thing is, we have about 400 folks there.
Or about 250, 300, but yes, a lot. Kit Morris, Kit Morris is coming.
Some number underneath what the Fire Marshal will allow us to do in the building, right?
Kit Morris from Emerge is our keynote speaker. So come and hear him speak.
Kit from Emerge, and a great breakfast and a great time to fellowship with each other and also just to worship God in the midst of, you know, in the midst of this, a lot of tension in our nation and the world. And a lot of times you just get overwhelmed by that. And sometimes it's just good as a community to come together and take a deep breath and realize that, as it says in Psalm 2, that the nations rage and the kings of the world rage, and yet their hearts are as water in the hands of the king. So a good time to remember that. I had an opportunity to go last Sunday to the 202nd anniversary celebration of Middle Run Baptist Church. And what a wonderful time. They had service celebration during their morning service, and then they had a second time of celebration in the afternoon. And the mayor was, allowed me to present the proclamation to the church at that time. And let me tell you, getting together with, being a pastor and having an opportunity to meet with 60 other pastors prior to that afternoon service and just talk and pray with them. And there are a number of young men that are coming into our community to take over shepherding of local congregations, and they just have a heart for the people of Zena and are humble and passionate. And to hear them speak and share during that service was amazing. I am really encouraged to see that we've got a whole new generation of shepherds coming into our city and standing up for their community as well, too. And I would also comment for an organization to stay true to its mission for 202 years is remarkable. And, you know, I always remarked, having gone to an institution that was down the river from Harvard for a while. But, you know, Harvard University started off with a mission, and it was to glorify God and present the gospel to the nation. And if you look and see how that mission drifted over the last 250 years to where that's not even any part of their heart or heartbeat at all. It's not hard for those kind of things to happen. They don't happen all at once. They happen incrementally. And the initial mission is lost and is substituted with something else. But you can just tell from the passion of the folks at Middle Run that the mission that started that church 202 years ago, from a family that had to purchase their lives, their freedom from slavery, and moved up here just outside of Zena. And one of the first things that they did with their first set of money was to buy a plot of land for the church. As a remark to the church, you know, after spending a fortune purchasing your freedom and coming up and saying, if you have just a little bit less, what would you do with what you have? And to see that they said, no, our first commitment is to purchase a plot of land so that we, as a family, can worship God, but also encourage our community to do that as well. And that that passion has endured for 202 years. It's just remarkable. So anyways, all kudos to the congregation there, and we look forward to them being in our community. I believe, time will tell if I'm right, they are the oldest African-American church in the state of Ohio. So we look forward to them being with us for another 202 years and maintaining that mission as well, too. So, I have a heart for Lexington Park and for the men that have a passion for that. And it's, once again, we've got 13 parks in the city and a limited amount of resources, but when you have men come with a passion, endurance, and are putting their own money. And, you know, part of what we asked, Ferguson, the crew there said, you know, if you're willing to get some private investment, you know, do that. And let's talk about that rehab of the basketball courts and some other areas. And they've, they've worked hard and they've come up with a significant amount of private investment. And so looking forward to us, you know, council members, to think about how we can partner with that investment. And Clayton, his vision isn't just for that park. Clayton has a vision to see investment in multiple parks across the city because he has a heart for all the kids and the families and the community. And he wants to see all those kids out there playing ball and having good activities that are going to build character and build community and resilience and persistence in life and help them, you know, as you, as you overcome things on the basketball court in terms of challenges, you then say, hey, there's other parts of my life I can overcome things as well, too. And whether that's on the soccer field or the flag football field or the basketball court or the baseball field, all those areas, you know, these are great things. Just also want to commend our city. We had two groups that we challenged to come alongside and put some activities in our public parks as well, too. And both of those groups came forward, and we got soccer now is going on in our rec soccer back in our public parks as well. And we had a number of weeks where we had Athletes in Action sponsored week-long mini camps at our parks as well, too. We're looking forward to doing more of those types of things as well, too, in our city. So thanks so much for the folks that came and challenged us on that. I thank you for the individual that challenged us about public propriety and decency and community businesses that build our community up and not tear them down. And so thank you, Madam Law Director and the Police Department. We want to come alongside of organizations that are looking for the best in our community and encourage them and get rid of barriers that are going to allow them to grow. When we have folks that have complete disregard for the community that they're living in and the lives of others around there, then we're not, we're going to say, okay, well, we're going to constrain activities that are not benefiting our community. So thank you, folks, for being involved with that. I'm sure we'll hear some more about that as well, too. All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for us to go ahead and adjourn. Moved by Council Reynolds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. All in favor, I'll do that. Let's go ahead and call. Call the roll. Here we go.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Motion carries. Any adjournments?